That's one way for some people to hear you.
Huh?
That's one way to hear you. I need a damn, you need one of them earplugs that comes around on this side.
You just, just do what I'm supposed to do, man. Trying to stay out of trouble.
With you, that, that, that's gotta be pretty easy.
One of my friends was gonna come, but he's out, he got in trouble, so he can't take it. Uh huh?
You're doing better than me.
No, I said he got in trouble, not me.
Oh.
Yeah, uh, straight out there, make a left, and it's like the second door. Should be okay. Hat just passed the sink.
Mr. Turner, could you speak up? I can't hear you.
Dan is excused, Doug is excused.
That's perfect, thank you.
There we go.
This plan is running back for two, so that's part of it.
Amy Hirsch?
Here.
Gerald Howard?
Here.
Here next.
Here.
Andy Royzuski. Present. With approval of the agenda.
I'd like to add something to, uh, new business, and that is, uh, election of, uh, officers.
Mr. Nichols?
He's out.
I'd like to add something to the agenda, uh, for the election of officers, chairperson, vice chair, and secretary. So if we could put that under new business.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Who wore the minutes?
I have a couple of corrections. They spelled my name wrong in three places. And if you go to the second page.
Leroy, could you speak in your microphone a little more, please?
It says my name is spelled wrong in three places. That's the only three that was in there. And on the second page, there is, uh, needs to be a correction. Go down to, uh, 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 where you see, this is deep and worse comments. Water pond on Ostrand Road was not completed. And it says pond was constructed by Petchara. I assume that means pond. That's all, that's all I saw.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
All in favor? Assistance.
Uh, could you tell me who made the motion and who seconded?
On which one?
Uh, just on the minutes.
Gerald Howard made the motion, Amy seconded.
Amy seconded? Okay, thank you.
All in favor was all ayes.
I figured. Okay. Thank you.
Assistance.
Say again?
Assistance.
I don't know, you're, uh, more of those, uh, fancy minutes there for the rest of us out here?
How's that? Look at how easy that was. See?
I like that.
You even got somebody to pass them out to yet?
No, thank you.
Holy cow. Thank you, Mike.
I guess family do it.
This is the last one.
Mike, do you have any more?
They're, they're coming around.
No, because that's the last one that she, she said that's the last one.
I'm sorry, I'll, I'll print more.
No, no, it's okay, you can.
Here you go.
Are you sure, Harold?
Yeah, it's right here.
Oh.
Did she give you hers?
Oh, did you, you needed one, ma'am?
No, I can get my phone.
Are you sure? Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
And you were, well, you just worked with it.
Yeah.
Amanda?
Yes, go ahead, Amanda.
That's not what you said, remember? You said, yes, would.
I said, go ahead.
Okay, um, so I was very happy to see that Leroy caught a couple of the, uh, mistakes in the minutes. However, there were a lot more. Um, most of it, very minor things, um, and I'm, I'm not even worried about those. Um, there are some names misspelled of residents, even after the resident at the meeting stated how to spell his name, not once, not twice, but three times, and it's still spelled incorrectly in here. Um, other residents spelled their names, and it's still spelled incorrectly in here. Have, even my name is spelled incorrectly, and y'all know my name. You see, we saw it all over the township for a while. Um, there, for, um, the public, where it says public comment was received regarding, uh, Gaspur's thing, it doesn't give a parcel number, it doesn't give an address, it gives an approximate. We're talking a public hearing. This is very important to put that type of information, because when you're looking back at these minutes, how are we to know what parcel is at west of Oakville Waltz and Butler Road? We, we don't know.
That's because we didn't know either.
And that's unfortunate, and, but thank you for letting me know that, because I, it wasn't on the, it wasn't on the application.
We had nothing in front of us.
Oh, okay, well.
Nothing.
Nothing. That's why it got tabled.
Okay. I, I thought you had a piece of paper or something. Okay.
Didn't even have the rest of it.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm glad that that was not a mistake. Um, the next page, there was a motion that was actually made for, uh, closing the public hearing, and it was never recorded in the minutes. Um, but it is recorded in the minutes, the time when the public hearing was closed, but that was never stated at the meeting.
I, 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 I've got my minutes, and I've got written down who made the motion, who supported it, and what time it closed.
In, in the minutes that were just handed to you?
No, no, on my minutes, not on what I recorded.
Yeah, in your notes.
In my notes.
Yes, but it's not in the minutes. And it, it's, it was very clear that these minutes, it, it was voiced in, because even on the last page, Doug Darling formally, which he meant formally, uh, requested the Township Board contact from the Euro County Drain Commission to review the drains of the four ponds, which the Stur Youngblood signed off on, which I know he meant Mr. Youngblood. Minutes are not something that should be voiced in. They should be typed. And there's missing addresses, there's addresses that are wrong for the residents that spoke from Augusta Township. They're recorded wrong, and there's even a question mark in one of the addresses. It's a public hearing. You should have this information, and it should be correct. And me, I don't get paid to do this. I spend hours of my own time to do this. You all get paid to do your due diligence. Not much. I know that. It's peanuts. This is a public service, and if you're not willing to serve the public properly, then let somebody else do it.
So you're up here not as an employee, but as someone of it.
No, I am a resident. I am a resident that spent three hours.
I, I, I know.
Listening to the, to the meeting over and over, to, to double check these minutes.
Anybody else?
I couldn't hear them. I, I left here. Anybody else?
Did you hear a bullet?
I, I, I heard a bullet through the roof.
I was trying to read.
You're gonna open up a pub, a public hearing?
Save your time.
Hi, everybody. I'm Rob Hayes with Aggregate Industries, I'm the land manager. Uh, you may also know us as Holson. And, uh, by the end of this year, our brand is to be totally changed from Aggregate Industries to Holson, so. A little bit, uh, of a change coming up. So I'm joined tonight by Caroline Depp. She's our environmental manager for this, for Michigan, for the Great Lakes region, and Daniel Clement, who's our area operations manager for this side of Michigan, east side of Michigan. So we're here tonight to, uh, ask for your approval to make a modification to the site plan that was approved by this body back in two thousand seventeen. And just as background, our original site, site plan, and hopefully most of the folks can see this, called for us to be able to, as a special use, to be able to extract from an approximately a hundred and seventy-seven acre.
Could you put a scan on the counter, so everybody could see?
Well, I wanna make sure the, the commission members can see it as well. Is that better? I'll stand over here.
Yeah, it's on the, it's on the back page.
Okay, all right. So anyhow, we got a hundred and seventy-seven acres, uh, approved for mining, that includes setback areas. Um, the actual acreage for three phases of mining, uh, came up to be a little shy of a hundred and fifty acres, I believe. So Phase One, uh, called for this area that's within, uh, the berm to be mined. Phase Two called for the area, uh, in the immediate vicinity of this wooded wetland, here, it's outlined in green, to be mined. And then Phase Three would be for this wetland.
Hey, guys, guys, can we listen, please? Thank you.
And from your packet, you may have noticed that, uh, you've got this drawing, and it shows the existing berm. It's a little bit hard to see, so I highlighted it in pink. The existing berm on this side is shown in pink. And the reason why it's shown that way is the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service requires anybody who's got a, uh, an American bald eagle's nest on their property, and they wanna do something like extraction, you have to maintain at least an eighth of a mile setback, uh, from that nest, or six hundred and sixty feet. So that's why you see this semi-circle, uh, from the eagle's nest location, which is here. As it turns out, there were two nests that were built over the years, since we, since we got approval in two thousand seventeen, and the other one was in real close proximity to this one. Well, what's happened is, and Caroline can fill in the details if I, if I miss anything, bottom line is, uh, both nests were vacant for many, many months, maybe better part of a year or more. Um, so we went to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and said, it looks like they've literally flown the coop. May we have a permit to, uh, remove the nests? And the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service granted us that permit, they verified the eagle's nest longer there. So that eliminates the need for us to maintain that six hundred and sixty-foot setback. So our proposal tonight is to ask for your approval to move the berm from where it's shown in pink to where I show it here in green, or, in other words, right along this wood line, and this is a wooded wetland, by the way. If it weren't a wetland, we'd have to come further out. Um, we're gonna protect the, the wetland, build the berm, and then mine out to the, to the foot of that berm, to that berm. And that's, that's essentially our plan, and, uh, the approximate acreage that we would be adding to our extraction area would be, uh, about ten acres, a little, little shy of ten acres. So you might, you might ask, why are we asking for this now? Because our plan shows Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three. Well, and we're, we're currently about right here in our mining plan. So we're a little bit behind the game as far as our schedule. Uh, COVID slowed us down a good two years, I would say. So we're not as far ahead as we thought, but part of the reason, or two, two reasons why we're asking for approval now is, uh, number one, eagles are gone, setback's no longer required. Number two, it's a lot more efficient and safe, as Daniel can elaborate on if anyone has questions, for us to mine this area now, as opposed to continuing to mine, uh, counterclockwise as shown in our original plan, and come back to this area. So efficiency and safety is, is why we're asking for it now.
Can I ask a question?
I, I don't, do you wanna open up to questions yet, or?
She missed a question.
I can wait.
Okay. Um, so, yeah, so bottom line is, we're asking for approval to relocate the berm to where it's shown in pink, to where it's shown in, uh, in green on this plan. So with that, if you have any questions, I'm available, as is Caroline and Daniel.
You got a question?
Do you have any date that the, uh, last time eagles were seen in the nest?
Um, no idea when they were seen in the nest. Uh, and I do know, somebody called us. Somebody actually hit the eagle, and they didn't know what to do, so the eagle was still alive and left, and we called a rescue place to come and get it, so I didn't know the eagle is.
That was my question, because I got, I got, uh, contacted today and said, uh, the eagles always come back to their nest, and we're gonna take the nest away. That's not good, so. But if the eagle, eagle, it's definitely not.
So, and American eagles are no longer threatened or endangered, I mean, they're almost like eagles, but they are still protected. I know this year, they even, um, starting in January this year, they even, um, made the regs less. I don't know what they were, but we still did it in two thousand twenty-two, so we had to follow the most, the more stringent regs, and, um.
So is the population up or down?
Way up. Yeah, they, like I said, they're not.
Not in Michigan.
In Michigan, too. Oh, they're all we have seen. So I have some in my backyard. Yep, so, uh, and, so we just know during the two thousand twenty-two nesting time, there were no, there were no eggs and no, no nests, or no, or no, or no, no fledglings, or no, um, yeah. You know, because underneath it, yeah, they are very messy. They were, they, they were clean, and the nest was really clean. So I don't know if, even if the year before there were any, um, eaglets in the, uh, thing. The last time we actually, they were, uh, tagged by the National Wildlife, where the wildlife, they came out to the, uh, site was like two thousand seventeen or eighteen, we knew there were fledglings in, um, during that time. We didn't see, we haven't seen any young eagles, um, maybe those of a couple of years. They have seen larger, though, so. Adult eagles, but no fledglings in the past couple of years, twenty-two, so.
You haven't seen eagles in the area at all?
Well, I know that one got hit in two thousand twenty-two, um, on Oaky Road. Somebody called us, because they didn't know if they had to notify anybody, so we contacted the U.S. Wildlife and let them know that somebody had hit an eagle. They said there's nothing they, to do, but it was still alive, so raisin raptors came and got it. It, it was fine, I think it just had a broken link in there to rehabilitate it. I'm not sure where they returned them, or how they returned them after they were rehabilitating them, so. I know that eagle that was in that area is not in the area anymore.
So you contacted the Fish and Wildlife to come out and check the nests?
They, they do not come out and check the nests, no. You just have to get a permit, so, um, we also took through the U.S. Wildlife. No.
Who verifies it?
Um, nobody.
Is there a part number for the incident?
They honestly don't care if it's been used, whatever. All they, if you wanna remove a nest, you can. You can only remove it between October and December, when they're not, um, when they're not, uh.
So we don't know for sure if the eagles have been back?
Well, I think they already extracted the trees, at least.
Yeah, so if eagles come back.
Oh, you already removed the nest?
Yes, so we got the permit, they removed the, we removed the nest, um, and we take down the trees, because they will build, they can rebuild a nest, um, relatively fast. We didn't wanna really remove it if it had, you know, had, had fledglings in it. Everybody's like, I'm not gonna be the one that removes it. So everybody's, well, like I said, we looked, and we even took the, uh, the, the two, the two trees, the, the trees that they were in, which one tree was, most of the trees in that area are, are younger and smaller. Though one nest was in a pretty big tree, we took that tree down.
Hey, brother, can we get through this man, so I can hear her?
Yep.
I'd appreciate it.
All right, we, we have our hands up, too.
Yep, yep, we got you. Just trying to get through this public hearing, and it makes it real hard to hear when there's more human conversation going on. I appreciate it.
Gotcha.
Right, so, so, I mean, we don't want it to come back. If it comes back, if the, if the eagle does come back and builds another nest there, then we're gonna have to go by the same rule, and, um, unless it continues.
If you move it to there, I guess this is, I'm concerned about this.
They could come back at any, I mean, they could, they could come back and.
Nobody verified that it's gone for good. It's probably more likely to come back, or it's a nest down. Prevent it to come back, or it's a nest, it'll do that.
That's, that's actually a risk that we have to take, is we're not taking all the trees down. We took the trees down, the, the, the two trees down that the nests were in. We could, they could come back, and if we find a nest there again, then we would, we'd use it.
So I guess what would happen if they came back, and you moved the berm over there, and then they came back higher?
Well, the berm, no, the berm doesn't matter. We would just have to quit mining.
Right.
The, the berm doesn't have any impact, and we don't have to have a berm there, but, so it's our risk that if, um.
Who verifies that? How would we ever know? It could show up there, and I don't drive by, you know what I mean? It seems like Fish and Wildlife would be interested in verifying that it's gone and verify and what it gets.
They, they're not verifying, they're not verifying the eagle, they're just verifying the nest. So they, you can, we can have eagles, we can have.
You're just saying that.
Yeah, they, they don't care if it's there, or, I mean, you get a permit to remove it, they're gonna, you know, and we had to remove it within a certain time, and then we had to file a report that we removed it, so they know the nest is gone now. And that's what they're looking at. There could be eagles, there could be eagles there. Like I said, they're not endangered anymore, it's more of a process.
Let's kill the eagle, and then we'll, then we'll ask permission.
Do you have a copy of that permit?
Not with me, but we can.
I have a question. This wetland.
There should be a copy in your packets.
Correct, where you can't cut down the trees, you have trees, correct? The woods here is protected wetland?
Wetlands are, the trees aren't protected, the wetlands are, so you can take down the trees, you can't disturb the soil.
Okay, 'cause that was my question. How did you take down the trees that were in the.
So the stumps have to stay, but you can't, um, yeah, you can remove the stumps, but not the tree, but not the stumps, can't disturb the soil.
Just for clarification, we did include the permit with our application packet, and correct if I'm wrong, but back when we applied for the special use originally back in two thousand seventeen, the regs were a lot more stringent. It starts protecting eagles as opposed to how they are now. Fair statement.
Yep, and I think they're even less stringent as of two thousand twenty-three, so I don't know what to be.
Right, but you're still running under the same permit.
Yeah, the site plan is still the same.
You're just making a reference to it, which I understand, but, I mean, that, all rules still apply to the same.
Yeah, so, um, so when did the, the eagle get hit in relation to when it was hit?
Many people served this country. Would it turn around and see?
Did it okay, or no?
So wouldn't be able to fly back to its nest, because we have its wings, so then you want. So it, it doesn't, I, I think it doesn't matter if, if the eagle was in the nest or not, as long as. So the permit's to remove the nest, not anything to do with the eagle. So I wanna remove a nest. There could be birds in it twenty-four hours, or, I mean, uh, the whole year, so I still wanna remove the nest. I put a permit in to remove the nest. They say, yes, even if an eagle is using it, as long as, um, when they do remove it, you cannot, you can only remove it when there's no fledglings in it, so, um, meaning no eggs, babies, whatever. So the only time the wildlife will give you the permit to remove a nest is between, um, October and January of the year. Anytime, it doesn't matter if it's, if it's using it or not. So, okay, so, so they're also called a migratory bird act. You know, it is illegal for anybody, or any foreign bird, to remove, um, eggs from a nest. If it's a sparrow or a beaver, you cannot remove the eggs from a nest either. Anybody can't remove, you can't go and empty the eggs, or get eggs from a nest.
So, what?
So you can remove.
I guess I'm kinda, why, why, when you applied for this permit, why didn't you remove the nest then?
We, we did remove the nest. The nests are gone.
I'm saying originally in two thousand seventeen, why did you go through all the records if you could just remove the nest and not deal with it? I mean, it's pretty hard. And basically what you did, I missed, round, why didn't you do it then?
Yeah, I don't know if they were still on the threatened list back then, or if they just decided they didn't wanna mess with it. I, I don't know, I wasn't, I wasn't around that. All I, I'm, I'm doing the same, I, if we have, there's another.
That's just a question. I don't know, it just seems like it's.
And we are just removing the nest, we're not removing the bird, so like I said, the birds were there, and we're taking the risk that if they, if they decide they wanna build a nest, or a tree there somewhere, so let's say they build it that year, we have to find the radius for that, um, and apply for another permit to remove the nest, um, you know, the following season when there's fledglings, if there's no fledglings in it. It doesn't matter if there was any there the year before. I'm just saying, we looked at it, we even did a, um, uh, what's it called? Drone, a drone thing to look at it, um, which, which, there should have been still something in there at that time, because I think we did that earlier in the season before we could remove it, and there was nothing in there, and it was dry, and like I said, there's mounds of, um, feathers and other. And there was nothing in there and it was dry and, like I said, there's mounds of, um, feathers and other stuff in there, um, when they do have fledglings in the eagle.
I know, it, you know, I saw an eagle, I mean, it means something special to me, like on top of that flag right there, it's like, uh, I went to the store, it was gone longer than expected, I come back and somebody stole my house. That's what, that's what I liken that to, I mean, you took, you took the tree down and out.
Thank you, General.
You know, so, I mean, uh, I'm just saying, it means a little more to me than just a bird in a nest.
There you go.
That, that's, I mean, that's my opinion, you know, and I'm one of a whole panel of people, but, you know. The bald eagle stands for something to me and I think a lot of people in this United States, I, I really believe that. And we didn't select a bald eagle because it was just a bird that, you know, he flew off, so I'm taking his house away, you know, um. I guess you do what you think you gotta do there with that, but, uh, it's a little disturbing, but I'm just saying.
Like, like I said, correct me if I'm wrong, Caroline, like I said, the, the nest was vacant for several months, the eagle that got hit on the road, we don't know if that came from that nest, do we?
No.
There one can, uh. Has there ever been eggs hatched out of those nests?
I'm seeing.
I think the last time was like two thousand seventeen.
Okay, don't, don't. Babies come back to their, and nests on their own after they, uh, get grown, or not? They would, they would fly off and never come back.
They may fly off, if, if, yeah, if an eagle.
That wouldn't be like your baby.
They can make a nest in a, uh, anytime, so.
Um, I also, I have a video somewhere, but I can't find it, I saw an eagle and five baby eagles on Bigelow Buns Road, like this spring.
Oh, I seen them too, I was.
So, I don't know if it came from that one or not.
There's about four babies.
Or a different one, but there's like, there's still eagle babies in the area, I believe, and not only is it an eagle habitat, but like, since you haven't touched it in a while, other things have been there as well.
So let me ask you this real quick, when, when you applied for this permit, was there, you were saying you had sighted the eagle or was it after the eagle was hit or what, like, if you applied for it, was eagle still using it?
When we applied for the US Fish and Wildlife permit or for this permit?
No, for this wildlife.
It was after the, several months of the nest being unoccupied, in fact, there, there are two nests, there's, like I said, there's another one two hundred feet or so away from the original one that was.
Yeah, because this is for terms of removing this inactive bald eagle, that is still keeping that was.
Correct.
So, and it's, now the permitted condition upon a strict observation basis of all advocates, so it sounds like they want to observe it. I don't know much about these.
Yep, the nesting pair will build another, will build another nest.
Did, did you take both nests down?
Yeah.
Yes.
So one permit covers his original nest?
Yeah.
Got my neighbor too.
My, my question would be, why would you guys have came to us before taking it down to see like how everybody else in the area thought about it instead of taking it amongst yourselves to do it, just expecting us to move the berm back?
We got a short.
It's easier to seek forgiveness than ask permission.
There's nothing like that, it's because jurisdictionally, it's the federal government that has jurisdiction over it, they allowed us to request a permit because the nests were empty, they granted the permit for us to remove the nests and the trees. We're, we're allowed to do, any, any landowners allowed to do that, and I'm just as patriotic as anyone else, I'm, I'm an army guy, I was in.
I'm not saying you did anything wrong.
The good is, is eagles are prolific, they're everywhere now.
But if on wetlands, I mean, that would be a good area for them to live and strive and. And they've been there for years and they didn't leave because I live right there, they did not leave until the blasting started there on that property.
Well, we said they were gone, they said they were gone, I still saw them, it's crazy.
Well, it must be nesting somewhere else.
Do you have proof of like pictures that you took of like when it's gone or eagles in the area, like date stamps of the last eagle?
We got a video of a drone flight, I don't know the date of it, Daniel, do you remember when that was?
Back in the summer, at least, stamp of a flight.
Some, sometime past summer.
I mean, we're kicking the stone, it's not that we can't help the nest.
Well, and it doesn't matter if they're there or not, we remove the, the nest. We're removing the nest, not the birds.
Go ahead, Amanda.
Um, I, actually, I just have a question and kind of want to clear up, I guess, the confusion I have, um. Aggreg, Aggregate Industries was the original applicant, correct? Um, I know Mr. Rob Hayes is from Aggregate Industries, I, I don't know who all of these brought with him, um, is, who, is, does wholesome own Aggregate Industries?
Yes, wholesome owns Aggregate Industries, a variety of other companies, uh, we're all under the wholesome umbrella now. And as I said, Aggregate Industries' brand is eventually going to go away this year and you'll see a new sign that says wholesome up front.
Okay, okay, sorry, I missed, I must have missed that, it was hard to hear with that fan blowing, um. I guess it probably would have been good to put that in the public hearing notice that formerly Ag Industries or something, um, but.
They're still Ag Industries.
Well. And most people know Ag Industries, people from London Township, because we dealt with it, they, most people think wholesome is Dundee. Because if you're still a part of it, if they hear Ag Industries and they think you guys, you know, the ones that are in our country.
Our, our parent company directly used to be Aggregate Industries Management, Inc., now our parent company is wholesome ACM for Aggregate Construction Materials, Inc., which is part of the wholesome group.
So I got a question here.
Uh, wait, can I, can I, can I say?
Oh, I thought you were done.
No, I wasn't done.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, there's a problem though with this public hearing notice, because this public hearing notice is for a property in Dundee Township and does not list anything for London Township. It does not list the parcel number for London Township. It lists an address and it says it's owned and operated at one five two one five Day Road, which is actually on the other side of Ann Arbor Road, which is Dundee Township. So.
Isn't that their office?
That's their office, but that's, but that's not the parcel where this event is taking place, that's not what this public.
Parcel numbers start with ten.
Huh?
The parcel numbers on this application says.
So, how many nests, how many nests did you guys take down too?
That's what I'm saying, that's saying London Township, so therefore you're having a public hearing for Dundee Township property.
So you only have a permit to remove one.
Yeah, if you read through, we, we contacted, said we found, we found the other one and then they, um, removed it and it might be, uh.
You can do them both.
Another letter attached to that afterwards or, that he didn't include in that.
No, I see that. Unless you have the single nest.
The, the parcel number you have on this, um, site plan, is that the parcel number on the, in the London Township?
Yes, sir. Yeah, two, two.
So it's?
They got drawings and everything.
So my question is, before you guys approved this berm to be done, there's some work that they did not do on their original site plan that needs to be fixed. Um, the eagle gets more space than my grandmother, which there's nothing we can do about, laws are the laws, but you didn't build the berm out. Our neighbor was supposed to have a runoff ditch put in his property and that was not done, so before.
Can you go, can you go there and point to it?
Absolutely, right here, Granny Rogers' house, this was supposed to be built out, not done. And correct me if I'm wrong, right here, there was supposed to not only be trees and a high berm, there should have been a ditch for runoff to be cut, so it's not going into Mr. Harnikus' field, that is not done.
Down that whole side?
Down this whole side.
Well, it's like the hard way, there's issues with wetland, I don't know whatever about.
So I guess my thing is, is why is Aggregate Industries even asking for this to be done when you guys haven't even kept up with your part of the deal with your neighbors?
Yeah, per, um, planning commission meeting that we were at in September, I believe, or maybe it was the one before that, but as part of our annual renewal, one of the conditions was to essentially build the setback. Behind to show a two hundred foot offset to provide that buffer between here and Mrs. Rogers' house.
Isn't that fine, when's it gonna happen at best?
And it hasn't been, like, the mowing hasn't been done, there's no trees, I think I, you guys have mowed it once, and I mean, it looks better now, but it was looking god awful.
Yeah, we, we mowed it at least once a year for the past two years, it was hard to get contractors, uh, prior to that.
So again, if we are not committing to your original commitments, why is this even on the discussion boards at this time, until you have crossed your t's and dotted your i's with your original permit?
Yeah, I would argue we, we've met and exceeded our, our requirements.
No, you, you know.
That berm is centered in front of that barn, not in front of the house where she lives in Dundee, the leaky.
Right, yeah, and, and the details that we provided the planning commission, like I said, it's either the last time we're here or the time before, it shows it's centered, and where, where we're going to build out behind this to provide a buffer where it won't be mined.
But you still haven't done anything with the ditch, Rob, where's that at?
That's the whole wetlands issue back there.
We go round and round about this, how can you build a berm in a wetland? You're not draining any wetland by catching the runoff from your berm.
Yeah, it's, it's.
You explain that, explain that to the coordinator.
Well, the, the, the rub is, we've got USDA that says the wetlands is a cer- certain smaller area, and we've got Corps of Engineers saying it's a larger.
What's wetland, what are you talking about on that, you're talking about the bottom.
Uh, so, down here, this, which would be phase three of our site plan.
That's, that's not where the ditching is, the ditch is, be where the berm ends, right?
Along my property. Needs to be right there.
Yes.
Yep.
That's where it was never completed, and that's my argument, is how do you build a berm in a wetland?
Well, is it, is it wooded wetland or is it?
No, it's not a wetland.
There's a difference.
The wetland.
Yeah, the wetland is this area here, the berm is outside of that.
But there's still no ditch on Mr. Harnikus' property.
There's, there is a ditch that goes down about right here, we just didn't have enough fall to, to get it, get all the flood and head east, so, um, part of it heads west, some of it just ponds.
Rob. Rob, I got a question, is it, define what your Corps of Engineers say, is it wooded wetland or is it wetland?
This is. I believe it's just a regular wetland, it's not forested.
You can't do anything with that.
Yeah, i- if we wanted to mine, what we, we call that phase three, if we wanted to mine that in the future, we'd have to mitigate, so we'd either, either have to pay into an existing wetland bank or we'd have to build wetlands somewhere else on our property.
Correct, just like it would be for, uh, our, um, what was the part of the airport? So this, the fly rock, that, that eagle has, the nest hasn't been around, is that part of, is that anywhere that, that fly rock?
No, no, the fly rock incident was, so this southwest corner.
Okay.
Uh, the eagle is.
Took the township and used.
About eight hundred feet north of it.
No, the fly rock came into my field, didn't touch the eagle.
We can agree on that, didn't, didn't touch it.
Luckily, I wasn't out there at the time.
Or anybody else.
Yeah.
So it seems to me, Mr. Chairman, that there's some parts of this that, uh, may or may not have been fulfilled under the two thousand seventeen permit. Whether it's ditches, whether it's wetland, whether it's burns, um, Mr. Neville, uh.
Yes, sir.
Can we look into the file and find out what has been done, what hasn't been done, and at least give the board a better understanding of what needs to be completed or what has been completed? So everybody is on the same page.
Got it.
Because it seems that there are conflicting stories here on what's to be done and what hasn't been done. I was not at the September, uh, planning commission meeting, I don't believe, so, um, I would like to see that information.
Okay.
So.
What he states was, they, they did discuss because that location of that indentation there was in front of the barn and not in front of the house, and they were to move that. Of course, that was at the end of last year, so.
Yeah, and that's what we committed to.
Right.
But well, it makes no sense to do.
It wasn't that it was going to be done by spring, so.
Right, because we're, we're several years away from mining that eastern part.
Do you want to create a, of limits?
And I, I can just add, each year we've got a renewal, we go through a renewal process and the township engineer hired by the township, Dave Kibisky.
Right.
Uh, reports on anything that's out of compliance, and I don't believe we had anything out of compliance.
If I might, I don't think Kibisky even went out there and visited anything, I think it was done over the phone.
I was out there with him. I was out there with him.
You, you can say that.
Okay, well, that's fine, but it's in the original thing that that was supposed to be done and the bottom line, end of the day, end of the sentence, period, it's not done. I get, and I have been, even with my father-in-law, I have been an advocate for you because I get, you have a business to run, it's your property, however, you are not committing to your stuff that you promised years ago and now you're asking for more, so. As, I'm not a businesswoman, but I have common sense, why are you wasting money to take that berm down and build another one when you have to fulfill those commitments first? And I'm just asking you guys, and I am a Dundee Township, and I should have got a letter for the special meeting because I know other people in Dundee Township did, and for some reason, my husband and I missed and we're on the corner of Dan Bunz, we did not get a letter. However, I'm asking you to please not grant this until they do what they were supposed to originally do.
Well, the, the agreement was that we would build this buffer, for lack of a better term, the two hundred foot offset, we would build that as we got closer to mining that part, it makes no sense to do it a mile, a quarter mile away.
And it makes no sense to move bald eagle's nest when they were there until you guys started doing that.
There you go.
Until you came here and, you know, you, you, you put the horse in front of the buggy or the buggy in front of the horse, you took these nests down. And now it's like, well, yeah, they can't, I mean, they can tell you, you can't move the berm, but the reason it's there is no longer there. And it's just infuriating when, you know, you're sitting there today, I'm sitting having coffee with my dad and we're talking and I don't hear the siren, and all of a sudden, boom, my whole house shakes, I jump, my dogs jump, my kid who's homesick wakes up crying because it scared him.
It was a big one.
It was a big one, and it's so funny, whenever we would call and we'd find out that the people that do the blasting would read the readings when it would get set in our yard.
Mike, when's the last time we got an engineer's report on this, that everything was, because I didn't see it in any of the minutes.
You should have a technical review.
I'm just wondering.
I, I think we had one.
You guys didn't even see this until the engineer sees this.
For a master.
I, I think the last one was at the time of their renewal, I'll, I'll find out.
Absolutely, this, I, I mean.
My question is, up there, where you guys are extending it over, and that wetlands, it's hard for me personally to believe those wetlands is having to be perfectly straight and straight across like that, I mean.
It is.
It's pretty straight across.
It is.
Yeah, but the wetlands is.
It's the woods.
And also, not this whole thing is wetlands.
Oh, not the whole thing?
And woods are a little strange, because they have what are called uplands and downlands, so I, out of this, um, this whole wooded area, I think about half of it is, is, um, technically wooded, wooded wetlands, but not the whole. The whole thing isn't.
Wetlands, half of it is square.
So, yeah.
Can we ensure a map?
All right, go ahead, Amanda.
Um, did the new members like me, uh, Daryl Howard, did they get copies of the original site plan so you could compare and contrast, you know, what it looked like and what they're wanting to do?
Uh, last year I did, whenever, whenever he came, whenever they came forward for the renewal permit, the last two, I was, I was at both of those.
Okay.
Amy's right on.
Okay, um, uh. I was actually going to ask about the technical review because you guys shouldn't even, you guys should have never even seen this until the engineer seated, seated, I can't talk, seen it. And you should also have a copy of that when.
With this?
Yeah, when, when.
Absolutely, I agree with you.
You did, um, do you have a copy of everybody that the mailings went to, I heard that somebody didn't get a mailing, mailing should have gone out, and that includes Dundee Township president.
And I have a question for you because you seem to know a lot, who's responsible for that, them or wholesome?
Uh, for the mailings?
Yeah.
That was me.
Your Z A.
That was me.
The point of, point of interest on this is that the ordinance states that it has to be notified within three hundred feet, now I don't know whether your property is within three hundred feet, your property as far as where their property is.
So, well, here.
Paul's property is in between the two, so I'm assuming Paul's property is more than three hundred feet wide. So that's the requirement for the township.
Okay.
Is that it has to be within three hundred feet.
So not necessarily from where they're doing this berm, because like the, uh, bodies?
No, no, from the edge of the prop.
The ash, the whole parcel.
Okay, because the bogies, they live right next to McCory on that far end, but nowhere near where this is happening. So that's where we, me and my husband and I were confused, like, okay, we're literally right there, how did we know? But if it's, we are.
It's three hundred feet.
I, I went three hundred feet plus from every parcel that the organization owns.
Okay.
So, you know, imagine the entire cluster of all the properties there.
Yeah, because we've got Mr. B. Smith's field that kind of separates us there too on there.
Yeah, with some, some twenty individuals, I mailed the notices out, plenty of time, to their addresses of record.
Okay, thank you for that.
And one more thing, y'all shouldn't be seeing it anyway because you have an incomplete application. The township information on the back is not completed. We don't know if he, if they had a fee, we don't know when this was received, we, nothing.
We don't have any type of.
So, make sure you have all your ducks in a row.
Or she'll let us know about it.
Where are you from?
Yeah.
We are approximately right here, can you see it?
Uh, okay.
Right there is where the face is.
All right, and it's only gonna get worse for Christie and her family as well. I could attest to it because I was on the other side.
It sounds like there's gonna be trees, a tree line there anyways, so they come back, they can rebuild.
Personally heard workers walking on the berm saying this is way too close to their house, and we kind of just let it go because we're finishing, because we're finishing up over by us. But it had one, at one time blew our doors.
And then we're gonna.
And of course, as Christie said, the people who, uh, measure this, are the people who set it up, are the people who read it, are the people who say it's okay, are the people who contact you, are the same people.
You know, share.
So.
And they work for the township. That's a township.
Okay, I'm in Dundee Township. All right, so I'm just gonna let you know it's gonna get a little bit worse with your blasting. So if you don't have that, that's gonna be awful.
So the people that do, that set up the reading, read the readings, but they're not employing the game of wholesome through the township, is that correct?
We pay into an escrow account.
Okay.
And the township treasurer reimburses them for the fees.
Okay.
But they're hired by the township.
Okay, thank you.
So is it wooded wetland or wetland?
Is wooded, this area here where the eagle's nests were is wooded wetland.
And so the young lady stated that, how long was the last time, right in here, is the plan on the, uh, camera? When was the last time a bald eagle had two, uh, uh, yearlings out of that, uh, cast out of that nest?
I don't know.
So how can you say?
It doesn't matter if they had them there, it would've mattered if they had them there this year.
So they can come up back to seven years. We have documentation that you present to the PC that states what you're saying is allowed.
Yeah, yeah, you can remove that, you can remove a nest, even if there were fledglings in it this year, we could've got a permit to remove them if we wanted to.
That's what you're saying?
Yeah.
Do you have proper documentation? That the PC has at hand to be able to remove that nest, that tree that that nest was at? Because I, I was breaking up something about leaving the stump. I'm curious, please. Do you have proper documentation that the PC has to view as full com slash ag industries to remove that tree from the state of Michigan or federal government?
Yeah, we've got, we've got a permit from the US Fish and Wildlife Service. It says we're allowed to remove the original tree, the one that was shown on the 2017 site plan. Then we've got additional documentation, I assume email.
Yeah, I think she said something back.
Yeah, when we said there was a second.
Does the PC have that?
No, no, we committed to providing that.
Now, now the thing is, is you also just stated that you don't know when the last time that there was a tear that was nested in that nest, correct?
It was sometime before, past summer when we did the drone flight.
So, seven years, they can come back.
They can come back now.
Okay, if they, if they're aggravated and are adjusting to what's going around them, obviously blasting may be an issue, okay? So they don't feel comfortable. They may come back, okay? So there's a study. So with that being said, by saying one year, okay? Or last spring, okay, less than a year, you can tear the tree down. Okay, because they're not going to show up until they need to read and land a nest. So, with that being said, if you don't have proper documentation of, of following an actual wave bald eagles, okay? There's federal and state guidelines to follow them. Yes, they are not endangered anymore. Are they still protected a hundred percent? So with that being said, you're pushing the, the horse before the cart here. You're rushing.
All right, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I'm with Daryl. You know, the eagle is just a bird, but it means something to me. And they can get from their tree with a nest. They did, that, that they were following the rules of the land. However, you, Planning Commission and ultimately the township board, as we say, whether or not they can move the berm. There you go. Plus, Daryl, you mentioned a question of, have I been on record, uh, bringing things to the attention? I sent a board, um, a letter to the township board and the planning commission, you know, state for the fact, you know, I disagree with you. Uh, Kibisky didn't leave his office to go do a visit at the actual place where all this went, because none of it lined up.
I think I walked on top of the berm line.
And we can debate that.
There's no debate in that.
Uh, we're not gonna debate it. The point is, I sent a letter, I disagree with what Kibisky said on all of it. I made that plain at the planning commission meeting. So you as the planning commission, direct manager of the board, they can remove eagle eggs till the cows come home, but you don't have to move that berm.
Here's my thing. You guys come into an area and you wanna be a good neighbor. You wanna do everything to make the neighbors around you happy because you're doing something that a lot of people are unhappy with. You go in there and you start taking down bald eagle nests that make a lot of people in the community happy to see them because it's been a long time since we've seen them as much as we have. That's not being a good neighbor. That's just making a lot of people very upset. So along with some of the other things that we've seen that's not finished, and then just going in there and chopping down trees and removing nests, it's not being a good neighbor. Just my, my two cents.
Another question too, is I know you guys think you guys are going to add to the berm on the back side, but why wouldn't you remove it as according to your original plan on the other side? So it gives them a little space so they're not so close to a berm like originally planned? Whose idea was that just to add the extra buffer on the back side? Not there, I'm sorry, the, uh, the ones that the residents were talking about on the inside.
Yeah, here.
That's correct. Yeah.
Yeah. One of the renditions of our site plan showed, didn't show this bump out. And in fact, this one is, is not accurate. It should be right in front of the house.
Do you write a little bit of thing to explain this?
This is just a draft, this is just a draft site plan. This is, this is, the purpose of this is to show this berm relocation.
Did you pay for this public hearing?
The I?
Yeah, or your company.
I, no, I guess there's.
It's public, right?
Yeah.
Pay for it. Why wouldn't you bring the right thing that you're gonna show?
Because the, the, the work is to be done, it's all right here. This is, this is correct.
To begin a public hearing, you have to have everything to scale. I had to move up on fifteen feet in my yard, okay? I had to show two scales exactly what I was doing. That's a live document, living document.
This, this has not been built, the offset, I recall that, is required for the Rogers' berm. Was never detailed on a drawing. It was discussed and approved by the planning commission that we would, we would build it right behind the berm at the appropriate time, i.e. when we get closer to the, to the eastern end of the mine.
Now, this is also an applicant, a special use in our township, okay? That has had violations of slinging stuff, okay? It's not trucks, it's not noise, it's projecting an object out of a hole into somebody's property, okay? And you guys have not gotten anything, anything that they've delivered. They have not given any, uh, federal stuff about this eagle's nest.
It's in their pocket.
Do you have any of that?
No.
But, just, just for a minute though, about that, back to my question, original question here. Um, so that the, the right side of the bump out over there, are you going to affect it close to the property line or are you just affecting the back side?
The back side.
There's a road, Daryl. There, there's a road there. Bun's Road runs in front of that, and like there's a road in between as well.
Yeah, yes, no, that's correct. I, but, but what I'm getting at is I feel like you guys should've cut the, the berm on the ins, uh, near the road area or the right side of the property line by Bun's Road, and also add that material to the back side and get it centered as the original plan. I don't feel like it's really helping the neighbor that you're just adding to the back side of a berm that they don't even know if you ever added to, they can't even see it.
Well, yeah, the purpose though is to, is to provide a buffer between our activity and the residence. So by, by, by filling, sloping, and grading two hundred feet on the inside of the berm, we, we make that change.
How are we gonna?
Doesn't provide anything.
Well, it was approved.
If we do it alone.
What is the reason that's not done?
With that bump out, has showed in front, that's extra space, so they aren't looking directly at the berm also.
I mean, that berm was supposed to be completed before digging, correct?
Correct, yeah.
And it's not complete, so why are you digging? That, that's my, I mean, if you're not complete with that berm, they're saying it's not done.
Because the agreement with the planning commission, like I said, it was the last renewal, the time before, I can't recall, was that we would build that offset at the appropriate time, i.e. when we, when we.
Well, yeah, but I mean, the original plan had it straight through, so you never did it straight through.
It's along, along Bun's Road, it's parallel to Bun's Road, it's right on, it's right on, a foot inside the berm.
So then you're, now you're, that was a negative to it.
Correct.
So, so my question would be, if you're saying that you only are using that bump out in that area to protect the resident's house, what was the point of having the open space in between the berm and Bun's Road? Right there in front of that resident's house?
Oh, I see what you're talking about, right in here.
A little curve, yeah.
Yes, that curve, why isn't that getting shifted center and then moving that material to the outside of the berm like you're saying? Because the way that you're stating, if I'm correct, is you're saying that you're going to add material.
To the backside.
To the backside.
Mm-hmm.
But that's not really solving their problem on why it's offset. They're still looking directly at this berm. I take it the reason why this thing was offset was to give them a little bit of space in between the berm. So if you're going to add some back there, that's fine, but I feel like you should take this material, center it like it was originally supposed to be, and put back there.
Wouldn't hurt.
You know, I mean, that, because you're putting it back there, yeah, yeah, it might help that buffer, but that's not really the point because that's still the same distance from here to there, so it's, that's really not solving any problems. This should be cut out and put to that side.
The, the purpose is so that extraction and blasting.
Well, I understand, well, if you're saying that, well, if you're saying that, then what's the point of you adding it there?
Because if we, if we add.
So what was this here for originally? Why is that blank right there? Why was it like that? If, if you didn't have to, I would've probably just kept it straight there then.
Right.
And just added that originally.
Yeah.
But obviously, there was a reason why this was moved with a bump out right there.
Yeah, just to show that there's a bump out. I mean, it's, we're, we're, we're adding this distance of buffer.
It was supposed to go, it was supposed to be cut out to the south of the house.
Yes.
Yeah, it should've been centered, yeah, should've.
It's centered on the climb step, not on, it's centered in front of the barn. It makes zero sense.
There was, there was an issue with that a couple of years ago because the berm was supposed to be in front of the house. But it was way down here and part of the house, or maybe all of the house, was still left exposed without that berm. So, Mike, I, I've, I've got a list of things that I would like you to look into. And, uh, I can give them to you because I want all the complaints that were lodged against Ag Industries, and I wanna know the outcome of those.
Okay.
I wanna see technical review done by Kibisky, when the last time that was done, because they're supposed to be done so many times a year. I wanna know the last time that was done, and even for this site plan review right here, because I, I don't see anything in my packet. Um, I want you to find out when the planning commission gave Ag Industries permission to build that berm at a later date and not do it as they were going along. So if you've gotta go back through the PC minutes or whatever, I'm gonna check as well. Uh, I've got the original meeting here, um, when Ag Industries came in front of the planning commission to start with. So, I, I would like that information.
In July twenty fourth, right here. There are two public hearings right here.
And another, I know he has some concerns, I do also. The biggest one is this one right here that's blank. I don't know why you would even put it in a packet if it's completely blank. Nothing's been approved, no, no permit fee, nothing. I mean, we have absolutely nothing, other than what, what they've brought forward to us. That's it. Nothing's been approved.
Go ahead.
Does each house get a buffer, um, like that? If they're too close and you have to ask for it, and how far is too far away from blasting in your house?
I believe the ordinance says we can't mine or blast any closer than two hundred feet from the nearest residence? Or maybe it's a hundred and fifty feet, but we, this one shows two hundred.
Yeah, there's not much, like when I say legit, the animal gets more than a human, the animal gets a lot more than a human.
Okay, I'm just keeping an eye on Google Earth, you can see.
And then who, who goes with these ladies and gentlemen to confirm, because obviously we can't see the backside on private property, confirm that that berm is done? Is it the engineer?
Yes.
I think there needs to be a neutral party that goes with the engineer as well. Because there seems to be a lot of he'sa, he'sa.
Yeah, exactly.
The zoning administration.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not in a township, I'm in this, it's my father-in-law who owns the property. I have no problem being the third party.
Yeah. I don't know.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's twenty twenty-one, it could be twenty twenty-two. We walked the site.
Yep, and I just wanted to say one more thing, but just because you moved the nests doesn't mean you're gonna, that the eagles are gonna go away. They're gonna stay, they're just gonna find, um, another way to do it. And we are, um, working on with the river raising watershed, um, there was a dam built on Macon Creek when the cement plant was originally there in nineteen fifty-nine, they built a dam. So, um, we're working to remove the dam, um, and bring that back to its natural habitat. And, um, that will create a lot more wetlands in that area. So, um, hopefully that will provide more habitat for, um, animals and stuff in that area by working with that, so.
Are you talking about the log dam?
It doesn't, uh, go with your site plan. Well, what you just said does not go with your site plan. Who cares about river raising, okay? Water shed. I'm worried about those eagles nests, they care.
It does have, because that's, that's gonna be a great big water, that's gonna be a great big wetland area.
So, I have a question. If the dam gets taken out and all the water goes down the Macon, and it hits the log jam, which is currently there, and floods even more, what, what, yeah, there could be wetlands, like for sure.
That whole process is, it will take a couple of years and several million dollars because you have to, you have to do all that investigation.
It's not like it's gonna happen. Done with like the log dam as well. I mean, you can't clear one part of the river and then just hope it doesn't go through the log dam. I mean, it's going to.
Yeah, and after, especially after the fiasco in Saginaw, the state, um, looks at that. Yeah, so it's not anything, we're just gonna, oh, let it, let it go. It's like a long study that takes a long time.
Me?
Okay. I'm just trying to make sure I understand this, all right? It seems like we're crying over smelt milk. Now, any proud American, especially one that served this country, all right? Is not gonna go in here and start chopping down an eagle's nest that they see is anywhere near active or been, okay? It looks pretty clear to me that we started talking about this area, and we've danced all the way around here, all the way back over to this corner where they're still working, okay? This is where they're at, they're not even over there yet, unless I'm misunderstanding some.
We're turning right here.
And now, would you not instruct your employees that might be clearing this land while leaving trees? Because like you said, that, that wetlands provide, you know, uh, good food for the, you know, eagles, all right?
Because, like you said, that, that wetlands provide, you know, uh, good food for the, you know, eagles, all right? So, that's not gonna be a problem, these trees are gone. Those removing nests aren't, aren't an issue until you find more.
Right.
Okay, and, and I would just think, are you an American-based company?
The, the company overall, the, the main companies, in Switzerland, but we've been operating here in the United States for over a hundred years.
But, you know, as an American, would you not, if you had somebody out there and they're, and they're chopping down more trees, cause these are the plans, right? Would you, you know, just if you see an eagle's nest, they will stop, you know? I mean, I would expect that, I would tell my employees that. Um, and I don't think, and I think that's what a lot of people wanna hear, they just don't wanna chase the eagles out of here, all right? It's beautiful, it's similar country. Um, I don't, uh, I don't know how we keep dancing around the whole damn thing and you know, as far as being ISO and Q S nine thousand and all the ab certified dollars, uh, write down everything you can, you can start with it. It sounds like you guys are starting even over here, you know?
No.
Well, that's what someone was talking about.
We started, we started here, everyone's got an opinion, but the fact is, we started here, we started blasting, we went into this pika, we're right here, we're right here.
Right. Yeah, so why you're over here and go ahead and follow these, that makes sense. So, but we keep, you know, it's starting off this hoop, but we've been in the mow, we're just talking about the nests, they're already gone, right?
Yep, that's the first thing I said, that's one of the first things I said.
Does that make sense? Okay, and we're talking, we also talked about it, it was issued in two thousand seventeen, right?
The town.
Right. Okay, and all you're doing is being nice about it, saying you already went to the proper authorities to, before you removed them, and all, all you're doing is, is coming in here and being nice and saying, hey, we found these, we did this, we're asking so that when we get to this phase of our project, can we do it this way in advance for planning?
Correct.
So that you can say, hey, first thing we're gonna do is this, second thing that, third thing this, and so on and so on. And then, you know, everyone, some people are riled up about this and some people are riled up about that. But, this is what, this is the issue that we're here for, right? Not for somebody's neighborhood, whether the grass is cut or any of that stuff. You know, I don't, boy, they start passing out tickets around here, I guess I'll be paying one every month, you know, for cutting grass.
No, we're getting that, they wanna change the berm and spend more money to move the berm back, but they have yet
Oh, they're spending more money, that's why you spend money.
Right, but they have yet, no, but they have yet to seal the berm properly.
Well, that's what I think they're getting ready to do.
No, they're not.
Okay, at this point, at this point, we're going to table this. Okay, we're going to table this, it's gotta go, it's gotta go to the engineer because it needs to be, you know, further from this point.
What is the issue, you know? I don't know, am I confused? Yeah, I mean, it's
Does anybody else have any questions?
We've answered any issue.
I have one question.
Right.
How far does the eagle have, have to be from construction?
Uh, eight hundred miles, six hundred sixty feet.
I thought you said they, they changed it.
Nope.
Start today, it feels today.
I, I don't know what it is today, I know that it's, yeah.
You said they did change it though?
Yep, it's starting, they, they, they lose to the regs and I'm not sure what they are, I didn't
So like Caroline said, if they come back to that wooded wetlands, whatever that distance is today, we'd have to abide by it, we wouldn't be able to mine any closer to it, whatever that is.
So we're watching when the eagle comes back, do you have somebody keeping an eye out when the eagle comes back?
Yeah, our guys in the, in the plant see them all the time, they're
Oh, they see them all the time?
They would see them, yeah, they would saw them when they were there before, so if they saw them going to the nest, going to the nest.
And she's more than
Well, that's what I said, so they may, they may, they're all over the place, I mean, I got it at my house, um. So you gotta watch and make sure we, that they, they don't go back in the woods, but we're, we don't, you know, they're, they can go back in the woods.
Well, it seems like they'll have a woods to come back to as well as the same amount of water, uh, wetlands to hunt from and eat from and they the nest's already being gone means that they're gonna have to rebuild the nest anyway and
Tree's gone though, so once, let's say we're back in tree. Alright, so, any other questions?
I have one quick one, cause those nests are moving.
They are not gonna chop down immediately, nest.
Why are you, Mr. Bayes, saying that, I heard you say at the beginning of all this shenanigans that, um, it was safer for your gentleman to go where you wanna move the berm, that's why you want it right away? Why is it safer to do that than your own?
It's gone.
I'll let you answer. Because of the, the curvature of, of the high wall, so it's, it's always safer to have vertical, straight ninety-degree faces
Okay.
When you're cutting and slicing rocks, so, uh, the curvature that we're having to leave there creates a lot of, um, can create a lot of problems with stability, uh, of the high wall for the guys directly mining underneath it as well as, uh, you know, uh, up on top for, for the drillers and the guys, so that, that is the safety concern, but it's just about flat faces.
So really, originally you could've made that berm a rectangle or a square, then your safety issue would've been obsolete without gaining all that smoke, so.
Yeah, we would've, if we made that a ninety-degree angle though, we would sterilize more reserves, wouldn't be able to get to it.
Sound looks pretty subtle.
I was just gonna say, you said that since it's a wetland, you could cut down the trees, just leave the stumps? Yep, okay, so, so wooded wetland is not largely like you would think of a wetland, it's just has some, um, soil and different types of soil, so they don't want you to disturb. Eagle trees, but like all the other trees could be cut down as well, and what you're saying is just could be like stumps and grass? You could, you can't, you just can't disturb the soils. Okay, alright, just making sure.
Helicopter and a lot more for some, otherwise you tear up the ground.
Just to help you out, man, just to help you out, man, wooded wetland, it's during the growing season, as long as it's two weeks during the growth season, there's waters. That's considered water.
Alright, we're gonna close the party right now, thank you.
And then, uh, eight forty-five. I've got all the backup ready here.
So. You gotta close it.
It's just discussion, like if you wanna table, if you would table at this time, we could, maybe, it's a motion you could make, or, or, or
There seems to be a lot of information that we don't have, but Mike's gonna get to us with one's tag.
I think he's
There's a lot of questions that need to be answered, so I would like to make a call to table.
I don't think, let's go, we table real quick, just stay with, with, you know, you're concerned.
I send my concerns to Mike, he's got something to add, let him know.
I, I personally want the berm to fix and lined up the way that it originally was, I personally want that. This, this planning commission stated it, I don't see a problem with putting it the way that it was originally planned. Shifted over to the backside, that's a thing, I can't speak amongst them, that's up to you guys, I, I what you do on that end. But that's just what I would like to personally see. Um, it definitely needs to be sent over to the engineers, cause we just have a blank sheet here.
Yeah.
Um, that ditch on the south end, I don't know nothing about any of it, it could be correct, I don't know, but at least look into it. And then, like I said, get that permit, cause that's my biggest thing, make sure that's filled out correctly. Able, especially table and, so, other than that, that's all I have.
Do you have a motion? Yep, I'm making a motion to table the, uh, the application for the site plan review for wholesome U S Ag Industries at sixteen one one, Yarver Road, Dundee, Michigan, uh, parcel numbers one zero dash zero three one, dash zero zero three, dash zero zero and one zero dash zero three one, dash zero one zero, dash zero zero.
Daryl, I made a motion, Amy seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bayes, I seconded that.
Amy, Amy.
Thank you.
Alright, I'm assuming business annual P C report being discussed.
Uh, yeah.
We all know the neighborhood watch, we need
Is being submitted as a coming of article two, section nineteen of the public act thirty-three of two thousand and eleven. Municipal planning and enabling acts states that the planning commission shall make annual
Ed, help me out here, brother.
According to a legislative body concern in this operation statute of planning activities including recommendations regarding actions by a legislative body relating to planning and development. We just going over these reviews or make sure they're right? Also, here in twenty twenty-two, planning commission review the following site plan special plus, mile and driveway site plan, Ag Industries, every other site plan. Ordinance reviews, we had here in twenty twenty-two, the planning commission review the following ordinances, solar ordinance, it's still under review, section one, article one point zero nine is still under review. Master plan during twenty twenty-two, the planning commission had discussions on the master plan and ongoing discussion will be had in twenty twenty-three and hope to have it completed and approved. Looking ahead for twenty twenty-three, as a planning commission looks ahead at its task in twenty twenty-three includes the master plan review and adoption, solar ordinance review and adoption. And as of the planning commission members, twenty twenty-two is Dan Cable, Daryl Nichols, James Turner, Daryl Howard, and Hersch, Duroziski and Bud Donovan. Approved by the planning commission members.
So do you have anything to add on that?
Yeah, I don't know if you're looking to do any, uh, any other meetings, maybe like you to take back to the, uh, township board. I know we worked on, um, s- master plan and also that solar ordinance that we had gotten the okay from the township board to hold, uh, I believe it was up to six meetings last year. I don't know if you foresee that for this year, Mr. Chair, or were you used to one?
We use more than two. I think it was two.
Yeah.
And that was what we named the master plan.
Yeah, you guys have different solars.
Well, there was, probably, none of two of them, no, the master plan discussion, and I know solar was in there as well, so.
I think, I agree, I think, um, I think as of the solar ordinance, maybe a special meeting for a solar ordinance, they kind of lift this down, some of it, and quite a few for the master plan, I mean, it's gonna take a while, yeah, but, it's not much to have in years.
So I have a question, um, do we get in here and, we have heard many of our employees, like, they're here every year, do we get your minutes here?
They did, cause They came in and addressed us though, and then they, they I thought they did, yeah, originally early, they
Nobody can hear you guys, over that hand.
Nobody can use your microphones, you have microphones at work?
Talking right into it, I don't know.
We're talking.
Apparently they're talking amongst themselves.
Those, those microphones, you have to have pretty close to, to, yeah, do it, Daryl.
Do it here.
What would Daryl do?
I think it's over the mic.
There we go.
What would Daryl do?
So.
Oh, it's gonna be
Are we wanting master plan review workshops?
I believe we do.
I think we should do like three of each, um, I know last year we did three just in the, or six for the master plan, but I, I feel like we should split it because solar, I mean, that's a drag it on forever.
I don't know, should we justify it being one or the other, can it be mutual, like solar or master plan? Cause I don't foresee this solar, we're pretty much getting close to it, I don't foresee it going three more special meetings plus planning commission meetings. I don't know, we're close.
Well, I don't think we have to use them, just like we didn't use the last six, but at least it gives us that option, if it does drag out, that we could try to speed it up just a touch and get that over with.
They talking six special meetings along with, or twelve regular meetings?
Yeah. Adding the, not same six, I mean, we didn't use them this year, but possibly we get into the master plan, we will.
I understand, so, actually, we don't have to say anything, if we've got six and we only use two, so what?
Does
We budget it?
Oh, this is already four twenty twenty?
Twenty-three, twenty-four, yeah, that's correct, but I just didn't know like if we had to separate them, uh, like if one was master, okay.
No, no, it's a special meeting, like this is a special meeting.
Well, they did direct us on the last one for the special meetings, for the master plan, but this one's just saying special meetings in general, so.
Yeah, but we got the upcoming, uh, budget meetings, so there's gonna be three of them.
Yeah.
And if the planning commission was looking at something different, other than what's already been budgeted for, let me know and I'll take that back to the board.
Uh, if we got six meetings, I didn't, I mean, my opinion is, that's good, but.
Yeah, as long as we can use them either way, that's fine.
Well, effectively, the meetings are directed by the board anyway, so if they choose to do it, then they'll adjust the budget as required, so.
I agree.
Looks good.
Yeah, we always could request more, we need them like you said.
Turning up budgets over twenty-five to twenty-two years, I did
Question on this, approve this?
Well, it doesn't matter to me, I'll, I'll make a motion that we keep it at six and I'll report back to the, uh, township board that the planning commission is okay with the six, uh, special called meetings, uh, workshops for the twenty-three, twenty-four, um, year.
I'll second.
Go ahead.
I'll second it.
Motion by Daryl Nichols, second by Amy, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, election of officers. I'll make a motion to reappoint the, uh, existing officers for twenty twenty-three.
I'll second that.
So that being, of course, the chairman of the
Are we, are we, are we approving each individually one right now?
You have to do it one by one.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah, that's what I thought, I was making
Unless them, so. Chairman is
What if I, what if I, so would it be time for me to make a motion if I wanted somebody different?
Well, we're just making a motion to open that up.
I'm making a motion, if you don't make my motion, nobody's seconding it.
Okay, 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 go ahead, I apologize.
Trying to make a motion.
I apologize, that's my fault.
Be patient.
Did you make that motion, Leroy?
I'm working on it.
Oh, I thought you did make it.
I thought he was making a motion to, to, uh, to, yeah. Go ahead, I, I miss, I misunderstood.
Are you ready or?
Start over, yeah, go. Start over, yeah, go.
Yeah.
Can I speak?
Yeah, it was my fault, I apologized.
Make a motion to appoint Dan Cables, chairperson, Doug Garland, vice chairperson, Amy Hersch, secretary.
Want me to second it?
Well.
I'll second it.
What'd you say, your co-chair?
So.
Daryl, would you say co-chair?
Leroy made a motion to continue with everybody, Dan Cables, chairman, Doug Garland, vice chairman, Amy Hersch, secretary, Daryl Nichols, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 That's, that is.
You shouldn't be asking for a vote, just make it.
Pose, well, when I heard everybody said, yeah, nobody opposed me. All right, down to unfinished business, update, salivation of solar ordinance drafts. So everyone over to the solar ordinance, we want to start.
No, that, that moratorium is up, uh, this month on those solar ordinances, I believe it's up in February, I'm gonna make a motion to table that, um, until we find out what direction the board wants to go with that. We've got all the information from the last meeting incorporated into these, uh, this ordinance, Mike?
Yeah.
So, um, I'm gonna make a motion to table this, uh, until next month.
Hi, motion made by Daryl Nichols, seconded by James Turner. All in favor?
Aye.
Who opposed?
Opposed. Cause that's what Bill would do. All right, rezoning application will be postponed until a later date, had an application, that's for the last public meetings. We gotta table that, or how does that work, cause we tabled it last time.
Yes, yes, yes.
It's nothing.
Nothing.
Have you contacted him, Mike?
Yeah, yeah, they just submitted a revised application.
Has, has.
I haven't looked at it yet.
Do, I, when, when he comes back, or when he comes here?
Mm-hmm.
Can we make sure that we have every bit of information that there is available and then some?
Absolutely, yeah.
If you have a checklist to go down, what needs to be done, I would certainly like to see you go down that checklist.
No, I absolutely need to, yeah.
Just to make sure everybody is covered on this.
Yeah.
The, uh, individual that's coming for the, the site plan review and the planning commission.
I agree.
I think I'm missing information on that.
Uh, we're all missing it.
Yes, we're all.
I don't even know what's going on with that.
No, yeah, not either.
Okay.
That was a mess.
Um, Mike, um, I've always told people when I was clerk, I have to have all the information twenty-one days before you want the meetings.
Yeah. Okay, good, yeah, I need to, I was gonna.
Cause. I'll explain why.
Please.
Okay, you send your notice to the New York News or whoever you want to, it takes them a couple of days to put it together and get it in their publication.
Right.
And you're probably pushing that real close at twenty-one days.
Yeah, I was gonna make it out farther.
Because, like, the last one, we missed it by a day, actually, and not saying it's your fault, but, um, Christmas time, all that stuff, you, you gotta, I mean, twenty-one days is the minimum.
I, you know. May have been, yeah, yeah. I'm gonna have to push these things back a full month at least.
And the other thing, well, and the other thing is, we have to see the, the actual application too, so you make them sit down and fill out things, you make them write up stuff.
Right. Right.
Because I've had people come in and say, well, I wanna do this and I wanna do that.
Yeah.
Well, wait a minute, I said, I, I am not gonna figure this out for you, you go back and you sit down and write it up?
Yeah.
We'll discuss it and then go from there.
I'm leaning too hard, I'm trying to take care of them.
I'm not writing for them, and you shouldn't write it for them either, okay, it's their request, but, and,
Right.
which might mean you'll have to go through the whole.
No, I absolutely have to.
Whole public hearing, all, well, you definitely will have to go through the whole public hearing again, so. That's my.
No, you're absolutely right.
You good with that? All right, I'll open up for second citizens' time.
Thank you, Jim. On the wholesome front here with the eagle's nest in, in the wetland. The wetland, you can, you can cut down all the trees in the wetland, as long as you leave a stump, you're still in compliance, so they can absolutely do that. Now, and they're saying, well, as long as the eagles don't come back, if you kill all the trees, they're not coming back anyways. So, the planning commission and the township board still holds the key as to whether or not where that acceptable limit is. And it was presented as such in twenty seventeen, as outlined by Rob, which, you know, I believe he was in good faith on that, but things have changed, rules have changed, they can go in and kill the nests, and the birds will move away. It's not a secret there, so I hope the board keeps that in mind, uh, they may hold the card, but you guys hold the key. Use it wisely.
Yeah, actually, the, the wetland is actually defined, and it does, it's cutting a tree down, it's gonna change a wetland.
Right, you can leave the stump.
It's not gonna cut down the trees in the wetlands.
Doesn't matter, the wetland is a wetland, cause you can have a.
And my point, Leroy, is you can, you can kill the trees, and their whole point is, they wanna move the, the acceptable limit because the eagles aren't there, it's the whole key, right? And if you take the trees out, then there's, where's the eagle gonna go? Eagles, I used to see them every day.
Well, I, I would like to, you know, add to that, I mean, what's done is done, they went above to the federal to get their nest.
Let's say, they followed the rules.
Thing, yeah, they followed the rules, that's done and over with, but, you know, they're asking to move the berm because now they can do that. And absolutely, at some point, you guys will have to probably approve it because it is their land, there's no, I'm speaking.
No, you do not have to approve it. No, you're on my time, you're on my time.
Listen. So.
Mr. Chairman, whose time is it, I'm slowing by two minutes. No, you don't have to approve it, you can leave it as it was presented originally. End of the story right there. Okay, I'm done.
Are you sure?
No.
Okay. All right, so, thank you guys for being here and putting up with it.
Shh. Oh, it's okay, sorry, Michaela.
Um, I appreciate you guys being here, um, I know it's a heated conversation, but what I was saying is, yes, you don't have to approve it in five years or in five days from now. However, I, I strongly would appreciate you making sure that they strict to their original site plan in twenty seventeen and putting that berm banked. And if they add to it, fine, at the end of the day, it's still giving that buffer for my grandmother's house, that is his property, that will eventually hopefully be mine and my husband's property, that's why I'm so strong about it, I hope that's okay with you, um, I know. And then the ditch for my neighbors, because that was supposed to be there, we all know Paul is a farmer, so all that runoff is going to affect his crops, we all know he has pheasant hunts that go on there, so if they get a bunch of runoff, it's gonna, you know, make his field more wet. Um, so I'm just strongly asking that before you even consider letting them change their site plan, you make sure that they make it to how it's originally supposed to be, and honestly, no disrespect to your engineer, but I, just from what I hear, and again, I am not a London township resident, I just live close to there. Um, it sounds like there's a lot of miscommunication, so I really would like to see a third party go into the property with him and see that that embankment is added to. Because at the end of the day, whether they take from the front and it makes it look nicer at the back, they're still giving that buffer, and to this gentleman back here, I, I get we're not in the three hundred feet, but is there a way for you to add us to, like?
I would love to, honestly, you know, it, it.
And I get it, I get.
I know, you know, I, I. It, it's, uh, yeah, I'm glad to have you and I thank you for your input and I'll get with you after the meeting and, and, uh, maybe get some more information.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, and thank you guys again, I'm not jealous of any of you sitting there.
Go ahead.
All right, um, so I'm kind of the after story of what's gonna happen if that's not done, because my house is way too close to there, and it has been, and I kind of, again, let it go, I'm in Dundee Township, they, well, right when we moved in, they were headed to Oki Road, we only had a few more blasts, but those blasts were awful, and they sounded like cinder blocks dropping on our roof, they blew our doors open, I, I'm telling you, it's gonna be awful, and I'm, I'm sorry for the people down on Oki Road. But, I, I hope that that also gets fixed, but again, they're such a big company that I feel like if they already took down Eagle's Nest, they should be able to do something to, I mean, not to sound like in environment level, um, but I am. They should, they should be able to do something to counteract that, we took down the eagle's nest, so we're gonna make sure this part of our property is safe, we took down this wetland, so we're gonna clean this up, we're gonna clean this, we're gonna do something else in our plant, so we're gonna make sure the river's clean.
There should be a balance.
Like, they should be held accountable for what they're doing.
Build a park, or, or nest.
Yes, so, I, that's just kind of my last say, thank you, and also a fresh name.
What is your name?
Michaela Bogie, uh, let me spell my name, M.I.C.A.E.L.A., last name Bogie, B.O.G.I., I'm in Dundee Township as well. So, should I call with any complaints to this township about wholesome, because?
I'll, I'll take them, I mean.
I've just been, I've just been calling Rob and.
You know, I'll, I'll take them, information is information, I'll give you my card before you leave.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Just, how much sway do you have over what they, they do and what they don't do with the eagles over on their property?
We don't have any.
You don't have any, do you?
I, I don't know about sway over the eagles or anything, but.
I mean, you're not an oversight committee for the.
Not an oversight committee, but I would imagine that the township engineer may have a little more insight to that than I do, I have no idea.
The township being who?
Township engineer.
The engineer, he's versed in.
He, he may have more insight than I do.
Eagle culture?
I have no idea.
How would that be?
Well, he should be versed in site plans.
Yeah, but eagle culture is something entirely different.
Well, you know, if that's part of the site plan and that's on there, then I would imagine, I would suggest you do your research.
And he don't have any sway, he don't have any say over the eagles either.
Probably doesn't, but at least he.
I mean, when they, when they took these eagle's nests down, I mean, this woman here thinks they did something wrong, they didn't do anything that anyone else couldn't do if they go through the wildlife fishing game. They know more about them than all those people sitting here, I would bet.
I think our biggest thing was they didn't hold up to the original plot, or the original plan stated, that's a lot of it, so, and then not only that, there's a lot of other information that was missing, so, we couldn't, we, we're kind of at a standstill either way, but we do see a lot of the concerns. Yeah, we, they didn't, I don't think anybody said they did anything or broke the law by no means, I don't think anybody has, has said that.
They pulled their proper permits, they did what they needed.
Well, you, you have approved their, every year you approve them for their site plan, right?
From two thousand and seven.
So if it's been approved, it approved.
It was approved.
Yeah, they're trying, they're amended.
Okay.
Yeah, it's getting modified now.
They're changing it from two thousand and seven, too, so that's.
But they did say somewhere in there that that was private property, right?
I thought they were going back to the original site plan, or was, was there a contingency?
Yeah, they're making an amendment to it to change that berm.
There was, wasn't there contingency on that when you approved it?
No.
That they would do that in the future?
No.
There wasn't?
No. That they had to say that this is because of the eagles, that wasn't all, that was, they drew their original site plan up that way.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
That's how that was drawn, now the eagles are gone, they wanna move far, is basically what they're trying to do.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I can understand that.
Now that we cut the trees down, the eagles left, imagine that.
They're somewhere, as you see them.
Go ahead, are you done, are you good?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, man.
Well, I'm not good, but I'm done.
Just, literally, a very quick glance at the minutes from the July twenty-four, twenty-seventeen meeting, the, one of the public areas for ag industries. It says, President Stacy Weber asked if the eagles relocate, could that change the plans AI has in place? Brian, whatever his name is, from AI replied that yes, it could alter their plans. I do suggest, especially for the new commissioners that haven't really kept up with, you know, everything, take the time, go through the minutes, find, you know, the ag industries, if anything that, that could relate. But most definitely the CH, give anybody that doesn't have the original, um, that, that way you can have all of the pieces of the puzzle, you know, because a puzzle is not complete, you're missing one, the first pieces.
Well, we're missing a lot of pieces, we're missing a lot of pieces right now.
Uh? Oh, from this particular topic, yes, um, but I'm, I'm speaking for, you know, for the cast.
The whole thing.
I got all those pieces.
Another thing is, your application is also incomplete, it does not have an application number on it at the top, so I wanted to point that out. And, um, I kind of wanted to just remind you guys that you speak softly, and some of you, I know it's just natural, um, I think for our Mr. Chairman tonight is because he really didn't want to be chair, and he was kind of like trying to high five his hand most of the night, um, but when you guys, when you guys are kind of talking to yourself and having sidebars, and even speaking real low, they can count as a sidebar, so you have to be very, very careful with that. Um, so just throwing that out there.
We're within a meeting, we're allowed to talk to each other, it's a whole public hearing discussion.
You two cannot talk to each other, and them two cannot talk to each other, you can talk in the hole, you cannot have sidebars.
Watch, watch two, are you supposed to talk to each other?
You can talk to everybody once.
You two and you two.
Um, I actually did call U.S. Fish and Wildlife because no one was answering my question whenever I called anywhere or answered the phone, I don't know, but probably not any of you guys anyway. Um, so I did call them, and I talked to three different people to get to this girl in Minnesota to tell me what the permit was for, which was to remove an eagle's nest, um, a crownberry, and they didn't get, and she didn't say eagle's nest, she also just said an eagle's nest. But, um, they did not do anything wrong, I wasn't insinuating that they did, I'm just saying, if you can do this, what are you gonna do for the, pardon, because it goes back to being neighborly, you already cut this tree down without, and you don't have to tell us, I mean, I guess you don't have to tell us what goes on in the quarry at all. Like, we can't see it, you got burns up, so whatever, but it goes back to being neighborly, you come in here and you take something that symbolizes a lot of different things for different people, and just because they're thriving and doing well, we should start taking them back down again, isn't that the, isn't that the reason that we protected them in the first place? To get them to thrive, and now we're like, well, now that they're thriving, let's just, you know, kind of rein it in, so, again, all right, sorry, that was my last thing, well, let's go home, thank you.
One has brought in a question.
Don't you, you guys just approved chair, vice chair, and secretary, right? Don't you, didn't you guys hire a recording secretary?
There is a recording secretary.
Huh?
Yes.
Well, why'd you approve a secretary? Don't you, right?
Because by the bylaws of the recording secretary, reports to the secretary.
Okay.
Yes, I understand, it was in, about the berm and Tommy Obama's house, were they going to indent that like they did the barn, or wasn't that the discussion?
The initial agreement, or the initial site plan had it straight, and after much discussion, which I was at all the meetings, it was agreed to indent it back from where the lane is on the north side to where the south side of the house is, it was supposed to be indebted on that whole area.
But the original, um, plan that they brought to us did not have the indentation.
Right, there was like three different layers.
I wanted to make sure that the planning commission understood that, that this indentation was a change, but they changed. I wanted to make sure that the planning commission understood that, that this indentation was a change, but they changed it in the wrong place.
What was the purpose?
The change fell through the cracks.
It was just a straight straight.
The change fell through the cracks. It was after I called Rob when he started building the berm.
Right, but let's let's forget about that. What was supposed to be, but my understanding was when. This summer, when we, whenever we had your last meeting with them, that they were effectively going to remove the front of it or just the back?
They were gonna add onto the back, which actually, you know, at this point, I'm fine with as long as it's not.
Okay, so.
I would prefer if the whole thing was more eye appealing.
Well, that's what I thought that that was supposed to happen was that I assumed they was gonna take the front and put it on the back.
That would be ideal, but I'm not gonna split hairs at this point on it.
Well, I'm.
I mean, you know, in fairness to wholesome.
Brad, we we have to make decisions. So if if you want us to fight for that, that's if you know.
No, because I'm I already kinda made a gentleman's agreement. I mean, I'm I'm good with that. In fairness to wholesome, they have fixed a lot of the things that I brought up. So it's not gone unnoticed. But some of the stuff just is like changing the rules in the middle of the game.
Thank you, Brad. Appreciate it. Anybody else? Anybody else?
No, I just wanna say congratulations. I'm getting the public hearing notice posted on time or published on time. It it was very close. It was the last day it could be published, but.
Is that a compliment?
It was.
Say it one more time.
Oh.
Can you speak to the mic?
Good ear or bad ear?
And actually, I also want to compliment uh Commissioner Nichols on that last motion to table because he included the parcel numbers and all of that. So that was great. I just really hope the minutes have all that.
I don't do the I don't do the minutes. Just so you know, I didn't do those other minutes either.
No, I know you didn't do those Duncan's last.
I was gonna say, I didn't do those minutes.
But you're not, right, Duncan's? So you know, kind of didn't.
But those are not how she's been instructed to do them, just so you know.
I need one more citizen's time.
No, it's a motion. She has to write it as it's stated. So.
Okay, that's not how she's been instructed.
That's that instruction is wrong.
I'm just I'm just saying, there's there's gotta be some clarification that's that's.
That's why we're having trouble.
When when there's when there's talking, okay, that doesn't necessarily have to be included. But all motions have to be included and they have to be written as stated at the meeting.
Okay.
By law. And I I can send you the law to show you if if you want.
Why don't you, if you could, send it to me because there's there's a lot of different um information going out going out there.
Yeah, I can. I'll. Yeah. Yeah, no, the motion has to be written as stated.
Okay.
Um, you can't just change history, you know, but I just really hope that it reflects that. So good job, guys. You did well tonight.
Go ahead.
I know I already used my citizen's time. Let me use Wade's. I would ask that the. When Mr. Kibisky makes a visit out there to wholesome, that the zoning administrator accompany him.
I agree.
Because right now I have a loss of faith in that last report. Okay, that's all. Thank you for your time.
Alright, any comments? Make a motion to adjourn, second by Daryl Howard. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm turning to.
Good, very good.
Wear me out.